All right, we're gonna begin our meeting. Call to order, the recess meeting of September tenth, two thousand and twenty-five. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Mr. Baker.
Here.
Commissioner Beck.
Here.
Commissioner Chauncey.
Here.
Commissioner Eversol.
Here.
Commissioner Graham.
Here.
Commissioner Hilton. Dr. Highlander.
Here.
Dr. Mackey.
Here.
Commissioner Sharp.
He will not be with us today.
Thank you. Chairman Smith.
Here. All right, invocation and pledge by Commissioner Sharp, who is absent this morning. So I will do that myself. I believe our invocation, we have Pastor Danny Lance from True Knives Church, all rise.
We are so thankful, first of all, for your love for us and for the way you show it every day, for the beauty and creation around us, but we're also thankful for these, our leaders. Your word tells us that you select leaders and then that you raise them up and you take them down, and our job as citizens and believers is to pray for them and support them. So, Lord, today we pray for wisdom as they make important decisions, pray for compassion as they make decisions that will affect thousands of people, pray for protection for them and their families, for peace in the time of maybe difficult decisions, and we pray protection for our first responders all across this area that put their life on the line every day for us. We are thankful, Lord, for our city, for our county, for our area, and we are thankful most of all for Jesus, your son. In Jesus's name, amen.
Amen. Let's face the flag, render the proper salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Madam Clerk, I'm showing zero recessed agenda items, is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you, we will now adjourn recessed, our recess meeting, and we'll go into our September tenth agenda session. Madam Clerk, roll call.
I just asked that the record reflect Lee Hilton has arrived.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Baker.
Here.
Commissioner Beck. Commissioner Chauncey.
Here.
Commissioner Eversol.
Here.
Commissioner Graham.
Yeah, here.
Commissioner Hilton.
Here.
Dr. Highlander.
Here.
Dr. Mackey.
Here.
Commissioner Sharp absent, Commissioner Shipley.
Here.
Chairman Smith.
Here. Thank you, we have no presentations today. We will be looking at the minutes of the August twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-five recessed meeting, August twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-five agenda meeting, and the September third, two thousand and twenty-five regular meeting next week. We'll also be looking at entering two reports into the record. So that takes us to resolutions. Madam Clerk, please read nine twenty-five dash ten, please.
Resolution nine twenty-five dash ten, a resolution to approve and accept applications for notary public positions, the bonds and oaths of notaries previously elected, the oath of deputy sheriff, and the oath of chairman and chairman pro tempore of the Hamilton County Board of Commissioners.
Thank you, ma'am, seeing no lights, nine twenty-five dash eleven, please.
Resolution nine twenty-five dash eleven, a resolution to reappoint three members to the Emergency Communications District Board of Directors. This will reappoint Eddie Phillips, Brad Tucker, and Eric Mitchell.
Commissioner Mackey.
Thank you, Chair. Chair, I'm not opposed to these nominees, but what I do wanna know is, the term of office, is it four years or two?
Claire, do you, I'm not sure who in the administration may have the answer to that one. Claire, do you know the term of office for these positions?
I've got.
The Emergency Communications Board of Directors.
If I may, Chairman.
Ma'am.
It's a four-year term, beginning September seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-five, and ending September sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-nine.
Thank you, Chair. Chair, my question is predicated on the idea that the more people who are involved in governing, the better. The more people who involve, you know, you have a greater level of democracy at play. And so, to the extent we can get more people serving in these positions, you get more representative government, and that's my point. How do we get Joe Q. Public, Hamilton County citizens involved, and not simply have a rotation of the same people over and over? Thank you, Chair.
Great question, sir. All right, seeing no other lights, Madam Clerk, nine twenty-five dash twelve, please.
Resolution nine twenty-five dash twelve, a resolution to confirm the appointment of Stephanie Huskins to the Hamilton County Regional Health Council.
Commissioner Eversol.
Yeah, I wanna speak for, Ms. Huskins is here, and very active participant, runs the clinical side of choices, and I think is an excellent candidate for this position and role.
All right, thank you, sir. Thank you for being here and being willing to serve. All right, see no further lights, moving on to nine twenty-five dash thirteen, please.
Resolution nine twenty-five dash thirteen, a resolution to reappoint three members to the Hamilton County Employee Appeals Board for a two-year term, beginning September seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-five, and ending September seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-seven. This will reappoint Mitch McClure, Jennifer Goodrich, and John E. Shackelford.
All right, thank you, ma'am. Moving on to nine twenty-five dash fourteen, please.
Resolution nine twenty-five dash fourteen, a resolution making an appropriation to Ivy Academy's Skiller Elementary, Inc., in the amount of one thousand dollars from general fund travel discretionary monies as allotted to District One.
Thank you, ma'am. Commissioner?
Yeah, Chairman, thanks. It's bad Skiller Elementary, and it'd be to help by moans for the new playground schools that's been built, so, thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. Now for the last, Madam Clerk, nine twenty-five dash fifteen, please.
Resolution nine twenty-five dash fifteen, a resolution making an appropriation to Saudi Daisy Vietnam Veterans Foundation, in the amount of one thousand dollars from general fund travel discretionary monies as allotted to District One.
Thank you, ma'am. Commissioner Shipley?
Yes, as money is used, I normally give it twice a year, some of it's used for shedding veterans that need supplies they can't afford, and some of it's used just for maintaining the building there. We have a great veterans organization, Saudi Daisy, and we're very proud of.
Thank you, sir. No for the lights, Madam Clerk, nine twenty-five dash sixteen, please.
Resolution nine twenty-five dash sixteen, a resolution making an appropriation to United Community Action Alliance, in the amount of eight thousand dollars from general fund travel discretionary monies as allotted to District Five.
Thank you, ma'am. Commissioner Beck?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is something we do every year to help them with their major senior event, featuring different people that entertain seniors, there's a thousand seniors there this year, and we inviting the commission as well. I think Commissioner Mackey is gonna be on program this year, so we're looking forward to hearing from him. He's just gonna be a presenter, not a speaker. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You bet. Thank you, sir. Seeing no further lights, Madam Clerk, nine twenty-five dash seventeen, please.
Resolution nine twenty-five dash seventeen, a resolution to change the time of the weekly meetings of the Hamilton County Board of Commissioners to four o'clock PM on Wednesdays, effective October first, two thousand and twenty-five, in order to provide the public with greater opportunity to participate outside of normal working hours, and to amend the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-six expenditure's budget for the general fund by forty-eight thousand nine hundred dollars for the cost of such change.
All right, thank you, ma'am. Commissioner Eversol.
Thank you, Chairman. This is, this has been a topic, and it's been something that throughout the years, several commissioners have brought to this board from prior commissions. And since I've been a commissioner for three years now, this has been one of the huge topics is, is why is our time that we meet at nine-thirty in Wednesday morning, why don't we change it to a time that our constituents can participate and not have to take off work? And so I thought, you know, it's a great opportunity, great time to bring it back up. I know I've talked with Attorney Varnell, Clerk's Office to put together numbers, it's in your packet, currently looking at about a ten thousand dollar annual cost in the Clerk's Office, a twenty-three thousand, I'm sorry, twenty-five thousand three hundred dollar annual cost for the Sheriff's Office, about a ten thousand four hundred annual cost to the Hamilton County General Government, which is mainly telecommunications, and then a thirty-two hundred dollar annual cost for Walden Security, so about forty-nine grand additional cost, and I'm sure some of this can be flex time as well, instead of coming in at seven in the morning, in some cases they'll come in later so they can cover that gap, but you're looking at roughly, our meetings will be like, instead of a nine-thirty to eleven-thirty or nine-thirty to ten-thirty, it'd be a four to five, four to six, but I think it's, I think it's important that we look at this. Wednesday, and the reason I put down four o'clock, I think Wednesday evenings is a pretty critical evening for family, 'cause you've got Wednesday night church, Wednesday night church activities, Awana's are starting in the fall with kids back in school, and this will be a perfect chance to, to get more participation from the general public and then still make those other events, so you're real curious to, you know, to see the input from our fellow commissioners, but I think, for me, I think it's very important that we, this is one of the things that we've gotta listen to our constituents, and if they want to be more involved in our commission meetings, then we need to adjust it where they can be involved. So, be happy to respond with any comments.
All right, we do have a few lights here, Commissioner Highlander.
Thank you, Chairman. I commend Commissioner Eversol's efforts to do this, and I think it's great that our public do it. I have had several calls from constituents that are concerned about, said, "Your meetings go more, longer than it will allow us to get to church." And so I, they said, "Is there any chance you could change it to a day other than Wednesday?" And, and so that was just a thought. Also, one, two or three said, "Most of us don't get off work till five, so it's really hard to come get off work at five, get here at five-thirty." So, I applaud the concept a hundred percent, I'm just wondering if we need to look at maybe an alternative other than, just to consider, I don't know. I very much think it's wonderful that we get more public participation, I'd like to do it, and, but it is difficult for someone to get out here and then get to church, or if they get off work at five, it would be pretty difficult to make it here, they couldn't get here before five-thirty. So, I don't know, it's, I like the idea a great deal, I'm just wondering, we might wanna look at other, other areas of doing it, thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. Commissioner Baker?
Yeah, I again agree with Wednesday, four o'clock, I like it. I guess my question is to Lee about the forty-eight thousand. So we got ten thousand to clerks, sheriffs, the twenty-three sheriff, ten telecom, three-point two to Walden Security, and I'm a firm believer in flex time, I mean, you know, we adjust based on the needs, in other words, we know Wednesday will be a later start for whatever the, you know, we just have to adjust our schedules. I just don't see any reason why we can't flex our time better and make this a zero-cost opportunity.
Well, I'd have to get with the departments that actually came up with those estimates, I think that's possible, and I don't know if Brooke has worked, if she was the one who worked on the county clerk estimate. I do know that Walden Security or the security contract will be additional costs, but for keeping the courthouse open, we wouldn't close it, you know, it couldn't flex time, but the other ones, I'm, I have not looked at, and I wasn't involved in coming up with those estimates.
Okay, yeah, if you would, just kinda check on that, yeah, I think the most, the one that sticks out to me most is Walden, that, yeah, I could see that, and again, I think they could flex, but everyone else, if it's Wednesday and they started eight, have them start at ten, you know, so, just the thought, you know, I think we can make this pretty close to budget neutral, thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. Commissioner Mackey.
Thank you, Chairman. Chairman, I like a lot of what I've heard so far, I listened to Commissioner Highlander and his concern about church people on Wednesday, and certainly, I'm sensitive to that, and like Commissioner Baker made reference to trying to lower costs, anytime we spend money we don't have to, I would really be slow to pull the trigger on that. No, I, I'm careful about taxpayers' money, if we're spending money we don't have to, but more to the point, Chairman, I'm gonna go back to the theme I spoke about a moment ago, democracy, democracy. We have looked at changing the time that we meet again, you know, we, we've looked at it many, many times, and so, we may move it to four to accommodate those people who work for a shift, but then it pushes those people, like in my district, the midnight shift, the swing shift, what do we do with them? Just say, "Sorry, you, you're working the wrong time?" I've heard it said before, and I think you have too, if it ain't broken, don't fix it. I want everybody to have their voices heard, but moving it from eight o'clock to four o'clock, from nine-thirty to four o'clock, doesn't quite improve the number, so I would be slow to fix it, Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Graham?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I'm open to anything, I think it's great that we get more participation, and I'd love for our constituents to be more involved, and I think we get a lot of great input that way, but my two concerns, and I guess it'll be addressed, is the cost, but, but not just the cost, furthering the cost, where's the money gonna come from? Are we gonna have to adjust these budgets, are we gonna have to take money from something else? I mean, this is a tight budget year, and so I'm concerned about where the revenue would come from, maybe you can get back to us and let that, and to be honest with you, Commissioner, I mean Chairman, excuse me, I don't know why this didn't go into committee to have this discussion and then come back with a recommendation.
Is that a, is that a question?
I guess so, I mean, 'cause I think, I think things, especially of this magnitude, should go into committee for discussion and then, and then come back with a recommendation. That's just my thought.
If you don't mind, let, can we go through the rest of these lights and then I'll?
Oh, sure, sure, I'm done, thank you, sir.
All right, thank you, sir. Commissioner Beck, I see your light.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, it's really, it's costing me to be here in the morning because I do have a full-time job, and so I do have to make some adjustments on that. That's one thing, it would help me if it was four o'clock, but I just don't see fixing something that's, as my colleague said, that's not broken, because number one, it's security, security is more than just about a few numbers or a few dollars. There's an attitude about having something in the evening, and you have the cleaning people here, and have all of these offices open, and you have people that are coming in and out, you have to man the doors, you even have to have extra security across the street in the parking lot. And the other thing, Mr. Chairman, if people want to come out, they will come out, if people want to be here for a specific issue, they'll be here. People are not just gonna come up here because we changed the time. There may be access to a few people, but what about family time? I would like to be at home in the evening at five o'clock, six o'clock, I'd like to be watching the news at that time, at home, not making the news down here. So, there's a lot of different mindsets about it, but as my colleague said, either way would help, but the other way, changing things would really, really be cumbersome upon us, I believe, it'd be, I think we need to hear too from, from the security, I think we need to hear from the Sheriff's Department, we need to hear from other people, we need to hear from the staff over here, we need to hear from people. When you say, "We don't know what kind of committee to take it to," what committee it would fall under, but we need to hear from, from these different departments before we, before we make this decision, like I said, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Hill?
Thank you, Chairman. I think another thing to consider would be, what are the other municipalities, what are their council and commission, or their council schedules for their meetings? And what do other counties do? Would it be possible to, if we don't go all the way to every meeting in the evening, at least to do one, one a month, to accommodate people, to give them some voice? I think it, I think it's a great idea, just a little more discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Eversol?
Yeah, just great conversation. Like the conversations about, you know, people do work different shifts, and so that's, that's unfortunately today's environment, but I think the true definition of insanity is, we, we want different results, but we do things the same way over and over and over and over and over again, but we expect different results. And, and I think this is something that we, we probably, you know, I kinda look at it like this, and you know, questions come about committee, I was, I was not elected by committee, I was elected by constituents of District Ten to represent their voice, and that's why I put this together, this, this item, this resolution, is because the constituents in my area that voted for me ask that if we could change our time so that they could come and partake, participate, that we do our best to try to accommodate, and I think, I think we deserve, or they deserve to be listened to. I think when we as government think of ourselves more than we do our constituents, then I think we're in the wrong business. So, that's all I gotta say. Chairman?
All right, thank you, sir. Commissioner Shipley, I see your light.
Might as well, put two cents in.
Give us a nickel.
I'd say both sides, but I think that, I think there's more to it than what we're talking bitch thousand dollars a year, personally. I kinda like Commissioner Graham, Commissioner Beck, ideal, we need to have more discussion on this. We tried this at Saudi Daisy about fifteen, eighteen years ago, go from a night meeting to a morning meeting, swap it down. We found out that that didn't work, we didn't already have enough people in the morning to have a meeting, I mean, we were there, and that was about it. I don't know it changes anything, four o'clock afternoon, everybody's getting off from work, the busiest time of the day here in Juddnuthen. Either way it go, I'll be here, but I kinda like, if it ain't broke, I'll pick it, so I'll probably catch down the road for that, but I don't know that it's worth the money that it would take, up on our entire staff. Patricia, you don't look happy. I tell you, Chairman.
Sneaky bringing Patricia into that, sir. So a few comments that I'll, I will give as well, I've had a lot of experience changing times of legislative meetings, and I will say, I rarely saw a difference in who was there. Commissioner Beck mentioned, when there are items of importance on the agenda, people tend to show up, but it doesn't mean everybody can. I'm not opposed to this, myself. What I do prefer, however, is that we do see legislation like this brought through committee before it comes to the body as a whole. To me, this is more than an allocation of travel dollars, for example, to, to a good organization within our district, this significantly changes how Hamilton County operates with the county commission, it affects all the staff members, all the constitutional officers, and every person that serves up here, so I do prefer that it have a little bit more than one meeting of discussion before we make a change. The other thing that I would like to consider, to prove everybody's point wrong or right, is maybe we try it. The resolution is changing times, maybe we can have a resolution that says, you know, for the month of October, we're going to meet at four PM, and let's find out, let's find out what kinda impact we're really having on both our staff, on the public, let's make sure we're making good assumptions before we make significant changes like this, that not just have financial impact, but definitely scheduling impact across the county. So with that, if Commissioner Eversol does not mind, which I think he might a little some, let's see if I can convince him, I would like to put this in committee next week, not wait too long for that, this would go to what is currently called legal and legislative, one of the committees I am working on changing, so I would like to make that request of Commissioner Hill, or Commissioner Eversol, I do, I do believe that this is something that we should look at and something that we should seriously consider, but I'm hearing there are definitely a number of commissioners that have concern, and I'd rather everybody be on board because it does affect all of us, or at least onboard as best we can. So, Commissioner Eversol, if you would indulge me, sir, can we do a committee meeting about this next week? There were some financial There were some financial questions maybe we can get answers to. And there were a few others with the possibility, maybe we give this a trial run before we make it permanent.
I would agree. I mean, we don't need to shut it down. I mean, I think people spoke. We need to listen. We need to make an effort to move forward with it. What that looks like is up to this board, not me, but up to this board. And I think making an effort moving forward with some type of resolution, I would totally agree. So thank you, Chairman.
All right. Thank you, sir. So with that, I wasn't quite ready to get down to committees yet. But because this item is on the agenda, it is active, there has been a request to send it to committee, and I would like to do that. The committee this will be heard in is what will be known as the Rules and Legislative Committee. And I have asked Commissioner Hilton to chair that committee. So now my request is, Commissioner, would you be willing to have this in committee next week?
Absolutely.
All right. With that, we will further discuss this item next week in committee. Thank you, sir. I appreciate it. All right, I see no further lights on this item. Madam Clerk, I believe we have one more committee of the whole. 925-18, please.
Resolution 925-18, a resolution accepting the proposal of Cigna to provide voluntary dental insurance for the Hamilton County employees and authorizing the county mayor to sign any contracts necessary to implement this resolution.
All right, I see no lights. That is the final item on the committee of a whole, so now we're down to committee assignments. This is still something, it is a bit of a work in progress. I don't have everything set permanently yet, gentlemen and audience, for how we're going to do committees. But we do have three committees today. We have the Finance Committee, Building and Economic Development Committee, Roads and Zoning Committee. I was Finance Chair, so pending new assignments, I have asked Commissioner Eversol to take over finance for me. So I will ask him to handle the fourteen resolutions on today. And then the other two committees, Building and Economic Development Committee. Commissioner Hilton, I'd appreciate it if you would go ahead and close out the two items that are on the agenda today for those, or at least introduce them for us for next week. And then Roads and Zoning, Commissioner Chauncey, I'd appreciate it if you would handle those today as well. And next week, we will have the new committee assignments ready to go. So with that, I want to turn it over to Finance Committee. Commissioner Eversol?
Ready to roll into it?
Ready to roll, if everybody is.
Okay.
Oh, wait. Oh, I'm sorry. Madam Clerk?
If we could do announcements before we move into committee?
That's right. Let's do that first. Sorry. I was all excited about our committee assignments all of a sudden, so we will adjourn, well, not adjourn, but we will move into announcements and start with Commissioner Shipley.
No announce.
All right, Commissioner Baker?
Yeah, I just, once again, like to thank all the people that voiced, that had voices with the Plan Hamilton. I think that was extremely important. When ninety-two, three percent speak, I think we should listen. And I think a lot of us did, and I just wanted to thank them and tell them not to give up. And I did hear it loud and clear that they wanted our meetings later because it was a hardship for many people. I know a lot of people in District Two that came, that took off time, didn't want to, but had to. So just wanted to tell them, thank you, and don't give up the ship.
Commissioner Mackey?
No announce.
Commissioner Beck?
Mr. Chairman, that, thank you, that event that I talked about, the seniors event, will be November the eighth, November the eighth. It's on a Saturday at three o'clock, and all the commissioners are invited. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Hilton?
Thank you. September twenty-sixth, that's a Friday. I am going to be hosting a golf tournament that's going to help one of our supported agencies, the Family Justice Center. It's going to be an evening golf tournament, five to seven o'clock, nine holes. I would love some sponsorship and participation from my fellow commissioners, if you have time. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Chauncey?
I have nothing, Chairman.
Mr. Highlander?
Thank you, Chairman. I'd like to reiterate what Commissioner Baker said about my appreciation for my community in the whole county, for their participation in Plan Hamilton. I also heard several that had difficulty is getting here and took off work. And I certainly appreciate Commissioner Eversol's interest. I have some concerns, but I believe it's a very good idea, and I think we need to at least look at it. Also, our elementary schools have the Fund for Excellence, the coupon book sales started last Friday. And gentlemen, I've got a brand-new coupon book for each of you, but it's still in my vehicle. If I have a chance, I may go down and get it and bring it back to you. It's good until September thirtieth of next year. People, for $15, they can get, save several thousand dollars. But in addition to that, the most important thing about that is the elementary schools get $10, that fifteen directly into them. And the other five, a lot of it goes into grants for the schools. So some of the schools have special needs and the organization tries to make that. So the young people can go to, on Thursday before the fair opens, they get a free night there. They and two parents can come, get free rides, free food. And that's a kickoff, and I'm going to try to be there on that Thursday and help run that. So I certainly hope our constituents across the county will buy these coupon books. They've got a QR code now, so the kids don't have to go door-to-door and have a dangerous situation possibly. So it's going to be real positive, and I hope you'll help our children and our elementary schools. Thank you. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Eversol?
Yeah, thank you, Chairman. Small Business Expo, Utawah College Hill Chamber of Commerce is putting it on at the Commons next Wednesday. It's eleven to one, and it's what a great opportunity for us to showcase small businesses. Because when you are local and you put skin in the game, that you're skin in the game, and you're hiring local and you're producing local or you're selling local, it's very important. So I'd like to recommend any small businesses that'd like to participate, to look at their website. We'd love to have as many as we can. And then I want to echo Commissioner Baker's, just appreciate all those that came out Monday. The shows, let their voices be heard about the new zoning going forward with what is known as Plan Hamilton. So keep engaged, just keep moving forward with our voices in it. So appreciate it. Thank you, Chairman.
All right, thank you, sir. Commissioner Graham?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We had a legal committee scheduled for today, and due to some unforeseen circumstances, everybody can't be here. So we're going to cancel that, and then I guess we'll turn that issue over to the new chair of that committee, if that's all right with you.
Very well.
And then my state representative is here, Michelle Renaud. I'd like to welcome her to the meeting. And Judge McVeigh's in the audience. We had our golf tournament last Saturday. Thank you, sir, for helping our Lookout Valley Lions Club. We really greatly appreciate it. And point of personal preference, today actually, the very day in nineteen eighty-three, which was forty-two years ago, my wife and I, I had asked her to go on our first date today, forty-three years ago. She's unable to be here, but she's watching, so thank you for going out with me, and I love you. Thank you, sir. That's all.
Thank you, sir. All right, before we go to Attorney Barneil, Madam Clerk?
Yes, just a quick housekeeping item. Building Inspection reached out to our office with a clerical error specific to the community panel numbers on Resolution eight twenty-five twenty-seven. That resolution had to do with the National Flood Insurance Program, and it needs to be corrected. If there's no objection, I'll reach out to Todd Lehman and get a corrected resolution.
Very well. Seeing no objection. Attorney Barneil?
No announcements.
No, Mayor Wamp is not here to speak today. Are we, any announcements from the mayor's office? None? All right. Down to me. So I just have a couple of comments, one mainly. I'd already talked about committees. Those will come out and be ready to go next week. But other than that, last week, I was very blessed and honored to be given this position. And I thanked a lot of people, including the previous chair. And I left one person out, and it's been eating at me ever since. So I'm going to take a moment right now to show tremendous gratitude and appreciation to Denise Eversol. This position specifically, much less this job, cannot be done without the support that we get at home. And for Commissioner Eversol to do this job for two years means that you were with him every step of the way for that two years. So my apologies for missing you last week. But know that I deeply appreciate everything that you do and all our significant others do every single day to support us in what we do. So again, my apologies, I missed you last week, but know that you are very much appreciated in everything that you do to help us be successful in our role. Yeah. Oh, Commissioner Beck, I'm sorry, sir. I may have missed your light. Oh, okay. All right. Very well. All right, with that, we will move into the public. If there's any new discussion other than zoning, we have some members of the public that wish to speak. Looks like. Start with your name and address, and you will have three minutes.
Andrew Jones, 607 Timber Ridge Drive. Think and happen, I guess. Slightly concerned, I've mentioned this once, but on July thirtieth, Hamilton County recess and agenda meeting, someone on the commission, I'm quoting, somebody from the audience can actually question the commission. If you go to the YouTube channel and find that on July thirtieth, it's exactly at nineteen minutes when that discussion starts. So that's concerning. What else is concerning? That we, the people, are in charge of y'all. We, the people, are in charge of what the body is supposed to vote on, what the body's supposed to bring up, how the agenda's supposed to be. And I truly believe that that is forgotten, not on a daily basis, but let's just say a weekly basis. We talked about democracy up here, representative democracy, not the same. And if that's the case, eighty-four percent of the United States works a nine-to-five job. So that'll leave sixteen percent work off nine-to-five. So I would strongly encourage that if we're working for, quote, "democracy", eighty-four percent work in nine-to-five win that battle. When I first got started into politics and actually taking time to have a voice, it was a little after my fiancee said, "Shut up or go do something about it." So I went to Denver City Council, and I'm just reading through the agenda, reading through all the notes. I remember seeing an eight million dollar something or another on a prison at two o'clock on a Tuesday. And my first question was, why in the heck are they doing it on a Tuesday at two o'clock? Most people can't make it here. And even if less people show up, you have the duty, the obligation, and the absolute demand to make sure people can show up and be a part of it. And the complaint of $48,000 in an almost 1.95 billion-dollar budget, that's 0.0045% of the budget. And if you're going to spend a little bit more money to be transparent, the fact that people complained about it, and all of a sudden you're concerned about the budget and where you can cut spending to be more transparent, you're making it too easy, gentlemen. Have a great day.
Please, sir? Go right ahead. Name and address.
Chair, Money Bell, a homeless journalist, the gray-haired like Fox, the man with the trillion-dollar voice. Seven twenty-seven East Eleventh Street, that homeless encampment. I'm very pleased that all of you decided to sit here today. This is a very important moment. History, on Wednesday, September the twenty-fourth, I think that's Wednesday after next. It's a historical moment for your Americas. It began what's called your three-tier form of government, your judicial, your executive, and your legislative bodies of government. That was two hundred and thirty-six years ago, seventeen eighty-nine. George Washington was your president. You had four or five people on your justice at that time. How do you know this, Money Bell? Because Money Bell was a student of history. And Money Bell was saddened by the fact that all of the history that he read, none of it included him. Not one page. I was forced to read a book called American History that had seven hundred and twenty-eight pages in it, and not one reflected Money Bell. So here's where you are now, with about a minute thirty seconds left on the clock. There's a case, and we won't name any names, that's right up the stairs here. It's a circuit court case. It's a case of racist white supremacy. And it involves everyone, the city, the county, and the state here in the state of Tennessee. And what it suggests, and what it has now opened up, is that no one in your history of America's judicial system has forced the recusal and disqualification of an entire court. Money Bell, a homeless journalist, a black man, sleeping on the filthy streets here in the state of Tennessee, Chattanooga, Hamilton County, has achieved that goal. I'm not asking for any of your newspapers. You only got one daily paper. I don't care if you're News nine, three, or twelve, Princeton, or Arizona. It's in your court records. It is your history of depriving black people of due process and equal protection of your laws that's covered in your Fifth and Fourteenth Amendments. I would suggest to you that as of last night, you've incurred another one billion, nine hundred million because of their chair doing the same thing as your former chair, practicing law without a license. We'll see you next week.
Welcome. Name and address for the record, please.
Yes. Good morning, everyone. My name is Makayla Winter, and I just recently moved to District Eight, and I would like to give my address for the record privately, if that's okay. But I just wanted to offer some thoughts and observations and reflections on the time-change conversation this morning. One, I am really, really excited to see this conversation happening. I think that the conversation in itself is really valuable and helpful. I do just want to offer, most other publicly-elected bodies in Hamilton County, to my knowledge, Eastridge City Council, the Chattanooga City Council, the School Board, they all meet four-thirty, five-thirty, six o'clock. They do meet later in the day. So I just wanted to offer that as context. I agree with Chairman Smith that I think experimenting would be a great idea. I think a trial run, looking at how this works out and what the actual impact is, would be much better than doing nothing at all. I was in the audience in 2019 when Commissioner Kathleen Jeter brought forward a resolution to think about six-thirty meeting times. And then I was really disappointed when ultimately that resolution was not adopted, but it did fail. I think it died in committee, but it never came back. And so I would just, my ask to you all would be, I hope that this resolution survives past committee and that we can keep having some really robust dialogue around it. I graduated from the University of Tennessee at Chattanooga with a political science degree. I'm somebody who is more than happy to try to block out my Wednesday morning for these meetings and try to be here as much as I can. And many of my friends and many people in my community would be happy to do the same thing. But nine AM is just a really hard time to make it to a meeting for many working people. And when I hear that it's not broken, I'm really curious about that because I personally don't know any constituent or any member in my community or people that I talk to about these meetings regularly, who is saying that this is a good meeting time, that it's accessible. But what I do hear over and over and over again, and throughout the years, is that this is a meeting time that the community would like to see be changed, so. So I just thank you all for the conversation and the dialogue that you're having around this. And I hope to see this conversation continue, and I hope to see the resolution eventually adopted, even if for a trial period. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone else with comment? All right, seeing none, we have no other business. We will be adjourned until September 17th at 9:30. We will be going directly into finance, at least in another minute, as soon as we make sure that we get our.